Danny.
Well, no wonder. Alrighty. Let's go ahead and start our work session with our gender review. We are adding a executive session tonight. To talk, well, update on the legal thing and then also a personnel issue that Robbie has to add. Minutes are just the normal thing. Staff reports will just be the normal thing. Harbor Day proclamation. I think the mayor pro temp should read that. Honestly, I feel like I've stumbled over that like thirty times. It's written so oddly.
I don't think you've read it one.
Yeah, okay, good. Save it for the tree planting. We have the public hearing and first read on.
Not first.
It's not first read. Sorry, we did, didn't we? Public hearing. You already said that to me, too. Yeah, sorry. Public hearing tonight. Is there anything you want to talk about on that one? I don't know, people, if anybody watched the planning commission meeting. They had extended their public hearing. Because the traffic study can't happen because of the road. My suggestion is that we do the same. Yeah.
And there were three things, right? I wrote down. So they had the community meeting. There was then there was the traffic study and sewer analysis, sewer and water analysis, too.
That's right. So there is a
Those three things?
At the end of the I was looking at my old one. At the end of the memo, there's a list of the things that the planning commission was looking for. The receipt of the applicant's traffic's impact study, of course, that the applicant hosts their community engagement meeting, which happened on the twenty eighth. There were about fifty people here, give or take. My count was just under fifty, but I may have missed some people as they came in and out. And they wanted, the planning commission wanted an analysis submitted, providing the number of linear feet for the sewer and water lines that would be needed to serve the development and a statement about whether any right of way would need to be purchased. Meaning they're not using public right of way. And then finally, they just wanted to make sure that the traffic counts were taken when Rico Road traffic is back to normal, basically when the construction is done. And it looks like, Robbie, do you know, do you have anything new from the contractor on that? I know that they, stuff was pretty close to being done. They were working on the apron at South Fulton Parkway today.
Yeah, three quarters of the final coat. Dave is done as of right about now. I just drove in on it.
Yeah. Okay, we've got good weather.
So they've, they've had their first community meeting. I don't know if they're playing on
That's right. So there's no second community meeting scheduled. It would not be a bad idea to have another one, right? People were looking for answers. So that's my, has been my recommendation to them. But I haven't heard from them on a potential date or even whether that they're, they're planning on calling one.
The sewer and water thing are pretty easy mathematical things, but because we know the traffic study isn't going to be done, continuing the public hearing just makes sense.
That's right. That's right. And the, the planning commission, so the, the planning commission hearing was, was continued pending receipt of those things. We won't have them for February. We don't have anything else for the February agenda. So that planning commission meeting is not taking place. It'll be the March meeting before it gets to planning commission.
So we can expect not to have any council movement on this until after their March meeting?
That's our, that's staff recommendation. I think it makes sense. Yes, I agree.
It makes sense to me, too. We just continue it to the April meeting?
That's
We, yeah, absolutely. You want to go ahead and have the public tonight?
I mean, if anybody, because we've advertised it, if anybody's come, for sure. Yeah. Then we'll just continue it.
I would recommend. No action. Leaving the council.
Yeah.
Hopefully. Traffic maybe second.
I think to your point, and I think you're right to strongly recommend, because they got some questions in the first meeting to be able to come back and also address some of these issues that they don't have answers for.
That's right. That's right. The, the code says when you are deferring, or council deferring, you need to state the date and time of the, the meeting. So we'll need to have that date and time ready, the April meeting.
Okay.
Part of that motion.
Can I ask, will that be published in the, in the agendas until, until that time so that people know it's just continued and?
Normally I've seen where matters have, you know, passed them. Not on those interim.
It just doesn't appear on the interim.
That's right.
Okay.
But would city
For sure.
Arch public planning committee. City council. Like others, the public.
So signs will be
Right, the regular advertising requirements, add letters and sign. I think, I think it says we're supposed to meet the requirements of the
Yeah.
Notice section.
Easy enough.
Two. Somebody just said you heard.
First time in my life.
It's usually me.
Okay, but that's anyway, that's what I recommend that the council. And that meeting is on April first at six o'clock. So I'll make sure to mention that in the continuation.
That's right.
Language.
If I can, while we're on the subject, in the public meeting, a few things came up that might want to consider in condition language. They don't exist in current condition. But, well, one we've talked about already is a number of lots north of Rico Road. Didn't have a number in mind, but I think that that's something that people are interested in. Potential fence, the Bowens to the east, we're concerned, like the the neighbors of the Serenby property were concerned about farming. The applicant seemed amenable to that. There are some spots where there are open fields. And of course, we do have screening requirements where the buffer is open. But they mentioned replanting the buffer with native plants. Again, the applicant, we may need to decide what of that how to quantify that or how, because again, in the code, it says effective screening. Do you want, and then you're allowed to have openings on non scenic roads. Want to allow the opening to two, a maximum of two hundred and fifty feet or insist a certain depth of planting, right? Otherwise, it's just a performance measure, effective screen. And then, oh, some people were concerned about whether they were renting. And in fact, the applicant's representative seemed to he was saying that there were no rentals, but the applicant, application mentions ten flats, which are not necessarily rentals. They could be condos. But he was saying no multifamily, but flats would be multifamily. So there's a little confusion between the representative and the plan.
They should clarify.
They'll clarify that. That's right. But people were concerned about rentals. You know, they talked about how they could maybe put something in the association CCRs. I would think you wouldn't want to disallow rentals entirely. But that's, anyway, that was something that came up in the meeting. I don't know your concerns. And then there were concerns about the potential danger of the the quarry, the cliffs at the quarry. Of course, they want to limit their own liability. So I think they'll do. But whether or not the city wants to insist on any particular measures related to protecting people from any, any danger there. And those are the things that came up. Oh, the, the limitation on the access off of Vernon Grove Road, the language that was in there didn't mention gates or bollards. Somebody asked about that also. And it would be the best way to do that. We, we don't have specific language in the conditions, so we may or may not want.
And we did some language like that for the one that we did that on previously.
It didn't mention, I, I believe I copied the language and it doesn't mention gates or bollards, although again, that's what, what would be done. Right, right, right. And so we can add specific language, right, right, locks and
I think that language is in the Arosa Grove Caps Ferry entrance.
That's what I thought as well, yeah.
So it, I think I copied that language, which, again, I can check it again, and we can make sure it's in there. Something about locking with, with emergency access.
And I would recommend to council that tonight that we really don't discuss any of those items in particular. I mean, you, you may hear in the public comments, some of those concerns and whatever else. And obviously, those came up, I'm assuming at the planning commission meeting, maybe the community meeting as well. But those obviously should be addressed all at one time. My fear would be that if we do some, we mentioned some tonight and not all of them, that that might upset some of the neighbors and think, oh goodness, the city's not concerned about my issue or whatever. It might inappropriately give the applicant, if we do these ten things, we're okay or whatever. So I would wait any discussion on that and maybe just tell the applicant, if, if, if the council wants, you know, listen, listen to the comments from, that are made by the public. And maybe the council wants to encourage a second community meeting. Maybe the council wants to acquire that community. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't go into any of the details.
But I mean, capturing some of that in here just kind of
Right, for the work session, I think is absolutely appropriate. I'm some of this evening when we're in the formal meeting.
That makes sense.
I have a question, really. So that, as far as rentals, we're talking about apartments. Or are we talking about?
Excellent question. In the conversation, there was no distinction, whether you're talking about short term or
Long term.
Regular, regular rentals, right. They were concerned about, I think, I think the concern was like apartments. And the, the plan they're saying is not, it's not a build to rent community. Of course, we don't have anything that would prevent that, so.
The other question, too. I mean, I don't think you're allowed to prevent somebody from renting their own home. Yeah. That's a, I mean, I get rent to own communities. Some places have restrictions on that. I get that. And multifamily, some places restrict that, get that, too. But the idea of saying you can't have rentals isn't a thing.
They can put it in their CCRs, I suppose, if they if they chose to.
Short term, right?
Government cannot come in and say, no rentals. You know, they, they might agree.
We can't require them to put it in their CCRs.
We, we can't. We can't.
Anyway.
But they would have bought our short term.
That's a different story. I mean, you're allowed to have a short term rental, but here, all the qualifications and limitations on that. But to say that somebody can't rent their house.
Any other, because again, good, good fodder for Mike is he's pulling conditions together. If he has anything else, or should we reach out to him in between, too? Anything else on that one? If not, the next one is twenty five dash oh oh seven, which is the homestead exemption thing, HB five eight one. Robbie.
Okay, this is where the riveting discussion comes into play. House Bill five eighty one, that went into place last, they voted last November. And basically, it's a, it's an additional, it's some tax relief for homeowners, the homestead exemption. It's a floating homestead exemption that is supposed to go through all the counties and the cities in the state. So Fulton County and all the cities have to determine if they're going to opt in or opt out. And currently, from so far, all the cities that I know of, that I've heard from, there's a couple that I haven't, I'm not going to name them, that I haven't heard from, that whether they're going to opt in or opt out, or opting in. And when I say opting in, that means they'll be part of this floating homestead exemption that goes into place. Starting now. But in order to opt out, you have to hold three public hearings prior to March first. So as you know, there's a public hearing tonight, and it's probably a lot different than other cities, because they made a decision earlier on, their meetings were before ours, and they had a decision beforehand that they were going to opt in. Our meeting is now, on the fourth, and we would not have the time to do three public hearings. Should you want to opt out, I didn't want to make that decision for you, because I want to make sure you have all the information before you make that decision. You know, staff is recommending that we do opt in. And I say we're opting in simply because when you say the homestead exemption that's going to be in place, the floating homestead exemption, what it does is it freezes your assessment. So let's say your house is valued at five hundred thousand dollars this year, and then next year it goes up to five hundred and twenty thousand. This, you're going to be assessed next year on five hundred thousand. So even though your house is worth five hundred and twenty thousand, you're going to pay, pay taxes on five hundred thousand. Of course, forty percent of that assessed property and then you get our millage rate. So I don't foresee, it's hard to really know. I've been trying to look at our, and I'm going to pass these out. I can give them to you now, but I'm going to pass these out so you can take them home and read them and stuff. These are, this is some information about our tax digest since two thousand and eleven. So you have that information about how we calculated milage rate over the years and what we budgeted, what we received. So you see where we are with that. We're right on projection right now for this year. But it really is based on, you know, building. So this homestead floating exemption doesn't carry on. I got some notes in here, too. I'm not going to go over all those, but I'll distribute those via email. That might help you understand this a little bit better. But if you sell your house, then it's not transferable. Now all of a sudden, you know, it starts all over again, where that, that assessed property is going to be at the value at that date. But if you keep your house, you know, there's folks like in nineteen ninety four, Marietta did this, I think it was ninety four, and there are people that still have that same floating homestead exemption from nineteen, their house is valued at that. And so they're paying taxes on that version. So it's really something for the taxpayers, and it's an extra little thing that the legislator wanted to do to help to provide taxpayer relief. I wish they did something different. Dana and I were talking about this earlier, you know, being our finance director, we're saying, man, I mean, nice that they were just at a state homestead exemption that applied to everybody and then wouldn't get the cities and counties involved. But if we opt in, then there's intergovernmental agreement with the county. And then at that particular time, and Rick can probably shed some light on this, there's, then it becomes eligibility for a one percent sales tax that'll come down on referendum, this fall.
That's a referendum.
Maybe.
So make, yeah, if they vote for that one percent referendum, we'll be eligible for that. So.
Which would mean that you could do a referendum for sales tax here.
Yeah, yeah. So that'll be additional sale tax. My work, my sometime, I get concerned because there's a saturation of sales tax. I mean, right now, we get TSP lost, and that's one percent. So what happens if, you know, okay, they, they vote for this one, and then TSP boss, they say, I'm not going to vote for that one, you know? So sometimes residents, voters get a little bit overwhelmed. And sometimes they don't understand. I mean, when a ballot initiative came for this, it was like, hey, would you like some tax relief? Well, how many people said no? Well, about actually thirty eight peoples, thirty eight percent people said no, because it passed by sixty two percent. So anyway, it's, it's very complicated. I'm trying to put it in a bigger scheme of thing. The bottom line is, the council has to have the public hearing tonight, because we, we scheduled it. And I believe, from legal standpoint, we've got two other public hearings this month. They don't have to be attended by the council. I mean, we can open and close the public hearing. Dana and I can do that. I'm sorry, not city clerk anymore, but Diane and I could do this. The open a public hearing and have that and get input and such, and have the legal public hearings that we've already advertised, that we got to go forward with. But if the council decides to go with staff recommendation, opt in like the other cities, which I think we should, and it's really the only way to find out how the impact's going to be on our millage rate. I was speaking to city manager of Haightville earlier today, and they're only going to, they're projecting like maybe a point three mill difference that they're going to roll back, so.
It, it has the effect of, yeah, having your rollback each year, a portion of it come from this program, basically, by fiat. And that proportion gets higher and higher as time goes on. Its values stay at the low, the lower point. In, in Chattahoochee Hills, the practical effect of that, if you look at kind of the velocity of home sales. Bigger tax chunks are coming from places like Serenby, where there's a faster turnover in homes. So those will ratchet up faster. And, and this will protect people that are in the more rural condition that maybe don't move for twenty or forty or sixty years, right? There's a benefit to that. The, the, my understanding of the way that this one works is it's kind of like the TSP thing, all the cities have to agree. So if one city opts out, basically, everybody loses the option. What did we find out about Atlanta? Because Atlanta did opt out.
Atlanta opted out. I read through the language that I reached out to Legal at GMA. And the language is kind of funky, legal language, you know? And it's, it's like, at least the cities with fifty percent of the population or more have to opt in. So if one city opts out, they can opt out. I didn't think so at first, but you know, other cities can opt out, as long as fifty percent of the population within the county cities opt in. So Atlanta opts out, they're not going, they'll come close, because they have a big population.
You can only lose one other big city and then it fails.
It fails. But I've talked to, I mean, Mountain, for some reason, I jumped in the mix and I started these emails out early January to all the city managers and stuff. Now I've become like the liaison for House Bill four, five eighty one by accident, so.
Oh, good on you. Typical of Chattahoochee Hills, too, right? Got ahead of the thing.
But what I'm going to start here, go ahead.
Does, does anybody have any questions about this? I mean, again, it's one of those that feels like it has benefits for the citizens. It will have a little bit of a negative impact on our tax rate or our tax collections. But we can manage that by managing rollbacks. So it's not going to not going to hurt us necessarily. But it is one of those things that, that we need to act on, because we're, we're kind of last in line, I think. Almost everybody else has already acted on it.
They're doing it. And yeah, Haightville's doing it tonight. And what I pass it out, you can just, this is just for just you to have for your own information. This is available. We keep this stuff on the website, too. But this is something that I did a long time ago. The, the top spreadsheet is basically all our, our, our digest since the beginning. And you can see where we're at as far as how we've accrued money. And then the second page, that's actually the digest from last, the consolidated digest, not the detail, but it's consolidated digest. It shows how many homesteads. We got about twelve hundred properties that are homesteaded out of a little over four thousand properties. So about fifty percent of the properties are homesteaded. And the last page is something that you, I just did this for you guys can have, so you can see what we do. This is called the PT thirty two point one. That, that form right here, this is what we use that we calculate and come up with the millage rate and present it to you in usually August and say, here's how we calculated. This is the information. So this is going to be used, actually, I'm going to play around with it, and use to project what it could be. And I will say that, we're, the mayor and I were talking about this earlier, we're supposed to get a form from the county. They told us early on in the process to give to the mayor and council to have a resolution tonight for you to adopt a, a preliminary millage rate, if you will, even though we're going to do it again come August. And all cities are supposed to do that before March first. Well, I don't know how cities can do it unless we have a special call meeting. So here it is, February fourth, I don't have that form, so don't worry about that tonight.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was just going to ask if anybody, any questions?
So Robbie's, just a quick question, just to be clarified so people can understand. So once you do homestead with Fulton County, whether you're sixty five, seventy or eighty, do they have to still come here and do something different?
No, you only have, and it's to the county, you only have to file homestead one time. Well, for whatever circumstance you have, like if you're just regular, you're, you're below that age where you get that, you just get a typical exemption, you do it once. But then all of a sudden, when you reach, reach another age that qualifies for another exemption, you have to go to the county, but you only have to do it once. So when you hit those, hit those milestones, you have to go there at least once, every time.
Just wanted to make sure that people understand. I do like the, the house bill, because you have a lot of seniors who have been here for a long time and ask every year if their taxes goes up and they are only on social security or something like that, then they don't have that kind of money to keep putting out on taxes. So it does make sense.
Yeah. Like the mayor says, it definitely benefits those longtime residents that have lived here and will continue to live here. It's just the changing of properties, or if you improve your property, or if you refinance. Look at that. We're on the same page.
Yeah.
Well, I'm a Californian. Lived out there. I've seen it happen.
Yes.
Every time there's an event that actually sets value.
Right, event that sets value. Yes, sir.
So does this eliminate the ta, the appeals that folks do for property value appeals?
Oh, there's still be appeals.
You can still.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But it gives you less, I mean, honestly, they do such a poor job of assessing here, that it makes that less important, because now that the value that you're stuck with is the value that you paid.
Yeah.
Hard to argue that.
We send Chris in anytime anybody needs to do a tax appeal. So yeah, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I mean, attorney's here to, you know, answer any questions legally that we need, but you know, he's, he's familiar with this legislation as well.
So we, we opt in and then let's say the referendum doesn't pass, so we get no sales tax. We don't, we want to
Well, you still set the millage rate.
It is. That's right. And this one's an action item tonight, right?
It is, yeah. So that, staff recommendation is to opt in and, you know, that the public hearings are going to still continue. And we'll, we can explain that away at the next two public hearings that, you know, we're opting in, if that's the will of the council. But again, we had to go forward and legally advertise. I didn't want to be caught off guard.
Remind me to ask Diane to segment these.
Okay.
The action and non action. So, you know, consideration and action.
Sure, yeah.
What is, what is the direction tonight in the meeting? Do you want to, we've advertised the public hearing. So everybody who wants to speak, any citizen obviously has a right to do that.
Sure.
But if the council's inclined to opt in, I would think you'd want to let the public know that before the public hearing is conducted. I mean, if, if folks want to say, look, you know, why, why are you trying to opt out and you're always our whole time going, we're going to opt in, you know, at least let them know, the odds are, we're going to opt in as soon as the public hearing is over. Go ahead and, you know, have your, have your say.
Yeah, I can, I'm happy to do that.
See, I should have done a doodle poll and not tell attorney about what you
And, and I'll let them know, too, that because of the advertising requirements and because of the fact that we set up these public hearings, we will have two more that won't matter, because the issue's already been decided. But if they see it advertised, they know why. All right, a couple of new business items. Parks Commission wants to change their meeting time. I understand that's just for the convenience of the group. Anybody have any issue with that?
And it's a requirement for council to approve that, but.
Yeah. And then the next one is the section two oh nine of the charter. We went through a couple of years ago, a process of changing the charter with the local delegation. They basically, long and the short of it was, we were on a four year cycle for mayor pro temp. We went to a two year cycle. So every time there's a new council elected, they have the opportunity to revote the mayor pro temp. For some reason, the actual ordinance that we needed then, once the thing was done, once we got the approval from legislature, didn't actually get done.
Well, we, we really don't have to adopt an ordinance for the law. The law changed when the mayor signed the local legislation. We just need to get it into MuniCode. That's all this is.
Okay.
So it's not that we have to do anything to make it effective. We just want to make sure our charter that's published, it's online by MuniCode, reflects what the legislature
But we need to act on it to make that happen?
We, we need to adopt this, because this is just instructing MuniCode, please, put in our charter what the governor signed into law.
Which we could have, should have done a while back, and it just got missed somehow. Good to know. Okay, so the, it's actually been effective. It's just, yeah. So that's just a cleanup issue.
Just a house key.
Any questions about that? And if not, that is it for the agenda. And we have another work session item. Which was mayor and council salaries. Who's was that?
It was mine, but Robbie.
Spreadsheet you have in your packet. Wait, it's in the beginning, very beginning. I did. Because I was asked to look at surrounding Jersey, I did it a few years ago, but when we looked at it, we looked at other cities that had similar populations. But you know, sometimes they've had a similar population. It might be in, in an area that's very rural and it's not very fair to compare them to that, or some of them like Avondale Estates, which really is a lot different, but same population. So I did front and back. The front page really talks about, I highlighted a comparison between cities and a general fund. And you'll see on the front page, this kind of tiered this way, that Chattahoochee Hills is the pay for the council, mayor and council is higher than the rest of the cities in the area based on general fund. But backside, if you look at it, it's the exact inverse. That Chattahoochee Hills is lowest paid if you base it on per capita, because our per capita income is eighty four thousand compared to other cities that have like thirty four thousand, twenty nine thousand, thirty two thousand. You can go and see all the different cities. So, you know, you're kind of like, all right, well, you're right in the kind of a position where, how you want to look at it. If you look at it on, okay, well, general fund, we're paid the highest You know, you're kind of like, all right, well, you're right, in kind of a position where, how you want to look at it, if you look at it on, okay, well, general fund, we're paid the highest, based on how much money we have in our general fund, but based on how much per capita income is in our city, because we have a city that has a higher per capita income, then you are paid the lowest, so maybe there's somewhere in the middle that you're thinking.
You look at it as a percentage of the general fund, the average percentage of general funds spent on council salaries is six point five percent of all the cities that we've got here, and we're at nine. That's, that's another way that you could look at it.
Yeah, yeah. So it depends on how you want to see it, and, you know, what's.
Well, one of my. And before, before discussion begins on this, I want to make sure all the council members understand that if this council were to vote for an increase, it's not for your compensation, it would be for future council.
After your next election.
For, and what hap, what would happen here, let, let's just hypothetically say that you voted for an increase in compensation, then those new council members could be somebody who's re-elected, starting January one, would make that new rate. The older council members who are not up for reelection in November and take office in January would continue under the same. You cannot vote for a raise yourself.
Right, because the last time we did it recently, the three council members that are, you know, eligible were, were District four, and three, and two, right? No, my mom.
One, three.
I got it backwards.
One, three.
Yeah, one, three, five, one, three, five. They were, they were eligible last, last January, not, not this January, not this month, but last January, just like Rick's saying, so.
So one of the reasons why I brought it up, because of trying to attract, well, the younger people, or someone else, just trying to make sure they are compensated for the work, because if you do the work, it is a lot of work. And to be compensated, you know, for that, that was one of my reasons for doing it. I don't know about how anyone else feel about it, but I think it should be increased, that's just me.
Yeah, it was why I did it two ways, because I didn't want to do it just, I've done it in the past based on population, but I don't think that's fair for you guys to think about, and I don't think it's, you know, I, I threw per capita in there too, because that's a negotiation portion for, for staff. Like, let's say I want to hire a, an executive here for the city, they're gonna come and say, well, you know, I'm gonna say, well, we only have three thousand population, we don't pay that much. They go, yeah, your per capita is this, so here's what I want.
Do anybody else have anything on?
I mean, to your point, right, and I would suggest in a small city like this, if you lean into the role, place where we don't have staff, and we don't, you know, like personal staff, like that, that's probably more work, a lot of I don't know that everybody leans into the same.
I see, because it, sometimes it feels like a full-time job, it's part-time, full-time, you know, it's kind of all over the board depending, so have a go. I'm just, I'm thinking about different options like this, what would, where we could land that would make, would make sense.
The what, what's the fair imbalance? Sometimes, you know, my train of thought is you get what you pay for. So, you know, because I know in the beginning, it was really high and got knocked down like ninety percent.
Yes.
Right? Because the legislature set it at like twelve and sixteen.
It was, and it went down to twelve hundred, like literally from twelve thousand to twelve hundred.
I do remember that, and then it got bumped up a little bit.
Just recently, twenty twenty-two, right?
Yeah, no, that was the first change since.
Since we cut it, since the beginning, or since you cut it. Yeah, once you go down, it's hard to go back up. Right, then you have to come and, and do what, like Rick's saying, you gotta vote for something that, you know, you're not going to receive till the future.
It's so hard, I mean, I did the math on it once, I've never taken salary, but I did the math on the salary once, something like twelve cents an hour. And, and my thought was, couldn't possibly afford to hire me to do this job, so.
You definitely don't do it for the money. You can never, you would never do it for the money.
No.
It's a lot of time and time, and wearing a bull's eye, and having thick skin, and looking long-term. It's nice to be appreciated, like, hey, I'm not losing money. This balance.
But to Ruby's point, right now, the balance is, you know, either, either you don't do much, right, you don't spend much, that word that way, or you have to be able to take the basic pay. The limits might be a little.
Could we consider?
Let me guess, all P cards.
Could we consider?
City of South Fulton.
Yeah, I think Pametta, Pametta has this P card, actually, they're getting ready to increase their rate stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I heard a rumor about what those numbers were going to, I was like, whoa.
No, and I, I dare to bring it up, but there was a poll recently, or just some city manager listserv they sent out, asking, other cities were asking, hey, what benefits are offered to your elected official? Do some cities offer health and dental care, and even eligibility to retirement? And to Ruby's point, that might attract somebody.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, fun is great, but if.
I didn't know what a P card was, this is my fault, we didn't know what a P card was.
Oh, sorry. No, there's just been a lot of fuss in the news about.
But, yeah, other cities do offer benefits. I did, I did it for one city, I got them in the pension plan for, for GMEBS at the council, and that's kind of an attractive thing to Ruby's point, like, somebody wants to, maybe they own their own business, and their healthcare is sixteen hundred dollars a month, like, oh, wait, I can run for council, or I can be a school bus driver, you know, some people do what they do. They want to do it, but there's a little incentive, like, wait, I can get.
Member of one of our neighboring cities that just retired, has four pensions, and his mayor's pension is one of them.
So that's something to think about.
Also, in the charter, it states that it can be done, it's already in the charter.
It can be done.
Yeah, if you go look at the charter, you'll see a lot of stuff.
Yeah, because you might go from getting forty-four dollars every two weeks, to getting fifty-four dollars every two weeks, if you change your pay rate, versus, wait a second, now I got health and dental paid for. And sometimes, I'm just saying, sometimes it's easier for us to negotiate with our brokers when there's more people in the plan.
Hell, you'd get some of those retired people running for office forever, just for insurance.
That's true. And as city managers, you know, having people that are retired that are your council, sometimes, not always the best thing. Sometimes they got extra time on their hands, right? But anyway, that's, that's something to think about too, to throw out there.
I will happily.
I think that's interesting, that's an interesting option, as far as.
I was thinking about attracting folks that you're, Ruby's talking about, about younger folks that want to get into.
And even if you have a full-time job and you're doing this too, you could, the pension, and, you know, it had benefits through the work, this, the pension part, may not be a lot, but if you're on council for years, and you get, I don't know, at retirement, a hundred dollars a month extra, or whatever.
Why don't you, why don't you, I mean, I think it'd be interesting conversation to find out what, what those options might cost the city.
Yeah, sure.
And just maybe come back next month and say, here's a way that you could do this, and this is what that would cost, here's this.
As opposed to pension, we have a social security replacement program, which has a 401K, but also a 457, so it would be a match. Wow, match of, wouldn't be much, right? Three percent of their salary. Yeah. Right, that part. Three percent, three percent of nothing. A little bit, but.
But not, but like, you know, again.
The health and dental, yeah, the health and dental.
Somebody needed.
And is that a fam, is it just the council member only, single, individual, or the family?
It could be set up the same way employees are set up, to where you got your, your individual, you know, your, your individual plus spouse, your individual plus child, your individual plus family. If we set it up that way.
I mean, you'd probably go salary to make the match, but still, insurance is something. But it, it has costs, so we need to.
I just want to encourage council, if you're gonna make any changes to the compensation qualifications in August, right? And you want to get, if, Ruby, to your point, to attract maybe some younger people or other folks who think, I just can't spend that much time without, you know, for, you want to get the word out, so I would encourage council, if you're going to make a change, do that, maybe no later than, you know, something like that, so there's plenty of time to, to get the word out, so people can consider if they want to run council.
No, we, yeah, it's home rule, we can do it.
We don't have to go, if you had to change our plan document, we were in a pension plan with GMEBS, we don't have to do that, because we have our own plan. We have, we have, yeah, charter, yeah.
But we can do home rule, we don't have to go to General Assembly. Not for God's sake.
So Robert, you would bring some information back next meeting, or right?
Yeah, I can do, and find out what the, the impact's gonna be for, for that. Wouldn't be, it's gonna be nothing really for the, for the 457, as Dana has mentioned, but the health insurance, I can tell you what that impact would be. Kind, well, what, we would pay your, the, your portion, but, of course, we, they always do a, they, they look at medical histories and stuff like that.
The, the way to do that would be to, same way that we do it, we look at employees, what's the minimum that it could be, and what's the maximum?
Yeah, like, for individual, for family, yeah.
If everybody was at the maximum, it would be this much, if there was, then this, it would be somewhere between.
Because we don't know, when people are, get elected, we don't know what situation they're in. We know what your situation is, who we know you, who we don't know the next person's gonna be. So, good point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, anything else? If not, we'll see you all at six.